Nursing Simulation Lab, Nursing Skills Labs, and a nursing testing center for all of our students and the community. At this time, I will ask that Dr. Lee Ann Chisholm Springer, LIT's nursing program director, please come up to give an overview of our proposed program.
And thank you so much for having us today. So I get the fun part. I get to tell you what we're planning to do. So these are the computer renderings of the building. And it is lovely. And we are thankful for those appropriations because to bring this program, we do need a place in order to teach them and for them to learn. So part of the reason why we're here today is because we're writing a proposal to the Board of Nursing for this program. Before you establish a program, we have to establish the need. And we have to show a very precise plan of what we plan to do, including an evaluation plan, how to evaluate student success. So if we go ahead and advance it, let's talk about the why, the what, and the how. So why are we doing this? You can go ahead, one more. Why are we doing this? Well, nursing is a high-wage and high-demand career across the country. That's okay, I can speak to it while you're getting back up. The Texas Board of Nursing established a workforce commission to look at the needs of nurses across the state and compare that with the United States. And what they project is by 2030, Texas will need over 200,000 more nurses. The United States, I'm sorry, will need over 200,000 more nurses. And more than 16,000 of those are in Texas alone. Of course, part of my job is going and speaking to our local hospitals and seeing what their current local needs are. So in talking to just three of the main ones, Baptist, the Medical Center, and St. Elizabeth, they have currently, right now, today, 132 openings for registered nurses and additional openings for LVNs. That does not include the number of nurses anticipated to retire. So we are in a critical state across the state of Texas, the nation, and particularly in southeast Texas. Our rural areas even have a greater critical shortage of nurses. So that's the why, the what. What are we planning to do? We want to create an experiential learning program that's geared toward creating these highly skilled nurses for these jobs. But we also want to have compassionate professional nurses that are ready to meet the challenges of the healthcare system, which, you know, we all saw during COVID is taxed very easily. So how do we want to do this? We want to do it a little bit differently. Traditionally, nursing programs are Monday through Friday, eight to five. Well, what we found is that we have a large section of students that are excluded because they need to work. They have families. They're supporting these families. And the traditional programs don't really allow for them to go to school. So we want to create an innovative program, an alternate type of program where students can do their clinical experiences, even classes in the evening and on weekends. The hospitals aren't bombarded with nursing students, and there are plenty of experiences. And patients love students because they get additional, you know, care and time and attention from them. So that's how we're going to do it. So we're targeting second-career students. We're targeting working students and people who are not accepted to current nursing programs. And I'll talk about that in just a little bit. So our goal is to educate nursing students that are already deeply rooted in our community and plan to stay in our community and work here. That's going to meet the needs of our local industry and our local community. So if you'll advance it. So the mission for this program is consistent with LIT's mission to use innovative teaching to prepare the professional nurse of tomorrow for collaboration with the healthcare team. So they need to know how to do teamwork and provide clinically excellent, obviously, safe nursing care, individualized, and compassionate nursing care for diverse people across the lifespan for a variety of backgrounds and having unique human needs. So that's a big mouthful. But we want compassionate and clinically excellent. That's what our community needs. So our vision is to create, provide caring with compassion and clinical excellence for southeast Texas and beyond. So we want to meet our needs first here. And then, you know, students and nurses will end up traveling. But we want to meet our needs here first. So the program description. This is a 60-credit-hour program, which is typical for associate-degree programs in the state of Texas. But it prepares students to take the RN licensure exam, that NCLEX RN exam. This is a particular challenge because students who graduate from an associate-degree RN program take the exact same licensure exam as students who graduate from a 120-credit-hour baccalaureate program. What I bring to this, I taught at Lamar University for almost 19 years. And I have experience in this. My master's degree is in nursing education, building curriculum. I actually taught those curriculum development classes and nurse educator role classes at Lamar University. And I'm proud to brag on my colleagues that they are experiencing a 100% pass rate right now on state boards. With it, in May, the test actually got harder. So we are doing very well in southeast Texas. And so I just want to let you know that and brag on my colleagues. We're all friends. So there are 24 credit hours of prerequisites. The nursing program consists of 36 credit hours, which is four semesters. Classroom, lab, experiential learning environments. And our plan is it's really dependent on the Board of Nursing, but we plan to admit 25 to 35 students every two semesters based on the Board of Nursing approval. So here's just a little snapshot of our prerequisites. 24 credit hours. There's no math or chemistry, which is typically a barrier for some students. We have remediation built in along the way for those math competencies that they need. The first semester is nine credit hours. Second semester is nine credit hours. And you may not be too interested in this, but I just wanted to share with you the flow. Third and fourth semesters are also nine credit hours. But there are a lot of contact hours in this program. So that's why I said it's highly experiential. They'll be doing a lot of hours in clinical. So as Dr. Hill alluded to, the Workforce and Allied Health Training Center will be the place, will be the home for the nursing program along with the Pharmacy Tech Program and Workforce Education. This is a great partnership because at LIT, we have numerous health professions. We have sonography, x-ray, respiratory therapy, EMS, the police academy. We envision all of these professions doing interprofessional simulations here. So in essence, this is going to be our little practice hospital, if you will. So students will learn how to work together and solve big problems before they ever even get out of school. So we can move on. Articulation is important. So we really encourage students to continue on after that associate degree and move to the baccalaureate program. Lamar University and UTMB, and I believe Prairie View also have a RN-toMSN program, meaning that students can go from associate degree to baccalaureate degree, or they can go straight from associate degree to master's degree in nursing education or nursing administration, which is also a critical need because there's a critical need of nurses, but there's even greater critical need of nurse faculty. So we hope to, one of the things we do in southeast Texas is we grow our own. I was grown here. I grew up in Port Arthur, Texas. And I'm back teaching here, you know. And I've been here teaching for 19 years. So we are working on articulation agreements with Lamar University, University of Texas Medical Branch in Galveston, and Prairie View A&amp;M. And we have close relationships with them, too. We want to cut through the red tape. So when students graduate, you get a job, great. Now they can go online. And they can do some online classes and just continue to matriculate through. Clinical learning experiences will be non-traditional. We'll have those traditional hospital experiences, of course. But we're also partnered up with our rural communities. I'm working on a grant with Lamar University on telehealth, telemedicine. And we're in Sabine County. We're at the West Sabine Schools out there and Fairmount Family Practice. And we're looking to expand that. So we can give our students those competencies that we saw during COVID are really necessary. But this is using high-tech equipment where a physician in Houston can actually assess a patient that we go see out in the community in Sabine County. So this is next level. And as I said before, it will be varied clinical hours. Some facilities are only open during the day, Monday through Friday. But otherwise, it'll be evenings, nights, and weekends. So I want to share with you some data. Another thing that the Board of Nursing required is that we survey potential nursing students. So this is what we found. When we launched a survey on our LIT page, we got 260 responses in around 10 days. So we didn't leave it open very long, but we know that we're addressing a population. So we asked them several questions. Do you want to pursue healthcare within the next five years? 94% yes. Would you attend LIT? 95% yes. Would you pursue nursing within five years? 98% yes. Would you apply to LIT for nursing? 97% yes. And if you'll move on forward, in looking at the population of responses that we received, the age ranged from 18 years old to 58 years old. So, and the mean age was 30 years. Now, traditional college student, the mean age is about 22.5 years. So this shows us that we have some probably second-career students, maybe some students who were not able to go to school earlier on in their life, but now they can. So non-traditional students do appear to be attracted to this program. When we looked at ethnicities, we didn't create checkboxes. We just said, how do you identify? And this is what we found. 31% African-American, 38% Caucasian, 23% Hispanic, and about 3% a mixture of Asian ethnicities. So we have some work to do, but I think we have a good start on some diversity. And we want to see it even greater. Another thing that we want to see and want to target is men in nursing because nursing is not a female profession. So we need men in nursing. And we want to see more of those. We also asked students, because this program is being developed for students and to address student needs, when do you want to go to class? When would that work for you? So some of them are during the day, some of them in the afternoon, and some in the evening. It's across the board. We also asked about clinical. What time, when is the best time for you to do clinical? 76% said weekends, you know. And we already know that a lot of our students are working. So we have to do some things different. We asked where you live. And I highlighted Beaumont because 111 of the 260 live in Beaumont. In Nederland, Orange, Port Arthur, those were the highest ranges. But they're from all over, as you can see. All those listed were some representation. So we hope that whenever we're getting students that are from here, raised here, you know, and live here and are invested in this area, that they'll stay in this area. We asked if they needed to work while going to school. 86% said yes. Do they need scholarships? About 57% do. That's the great thing about being connected with workforce and why I love having workforce in the new building because they'll be right in proximity to me where I can walk on over and say, I need some money for these students. And they are fabulous about doing that. Fabulous. I love LIT. Some plan to use student loans, it's a smaller percentage, and plan to work either part-time or full-time. That's 85%. 85% need to work. So in summary, nursing is a high-wage, high-demand field. Clinical facilities, we've talked to them, and they've told us that they invest a lot whenever students do clinicals in their facilities. And it's, you know, it can be disheartening whenever you invest so much and then students leave and go to a market like Houston or, you know, one of the bigger markets. So they would like for the students that they work with so closely to stay and work in southeast Texas. Current local programs are doing all they can. And you all need to know that we work with the Nursing Education Consortium of Lamar University, Lamar State College, Port Arthur, Lamar State College, Orange, and LIT. We work together to collaborate on how many students we could admit to clinical and so forth. So they're doing all they can. However, we still need more nurses. So there is room for another program. There's room for another program that is a little bit different with our class structure and our timings. And we really believe this program is going to meet the needs of working students and help students go to school that haven't had the opportunity to before. So today, we're requesting your support as we move forward in this proposal and submit it to the Board of Nursing.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer.
All right, thank you. I don't believe there's any questions. Thank you very much. And I believe we have one more proclamation.
Whereas the unprovoked attacks of September 11, 2001, upon America by foreign terrorists have thrust the United States and other countries into a war it never envisioned militarily or diplomatically. And whereas the challenges facing all the civilized people of the world as they relate to the war on terrorism will not end until those fanatics responsible or eliminated are brought to justice. And whereas America is fully committed to ensuring our freedoms remain unfettered and sovereign for all generations now and forever. And whereas world opinion needs to remain focused upon the eradication of these inhuman acts perpetrated around the globe. And one way to accomplish this is to never forget that those innocent victims did not die in vain. America can fight back by reminding the world that the deaths of these people will always be remembered, and they will be forever loved. And whereas a noble and appropriate way to accomplish this is through the annual celebration of their living. And whereas this commemoration should be conducted each September 11 throughout the land to include the promotion of global peace and goodwill, the demonstration of America's resolve and perseverance to win the war on terrorism, the advancement of responsible citizenship, the encouragement of patriotism and love of our country, and the, I'm sorry, and the pignot remembrance of those innocent victims who died on September 11 as heroes, one and all. Now therefore, Roy West, Mayor of the City of Beaumont, is issuing this proclamation to memorialize those men, women, and children who lost their lives and be it further resolved that this proclamation be publicized for all to see and know that the citizens of Beaumont remember the eternal respect those whose lives were suddenly without cause and pointless taken from them on September 11, 2001. May they forever rest in peace and abide in our memories. Accordingly, the mayor has hereunto set his hand and caused a seal of the city of Beaumont to be affixed. Signed, Roy West, September, sorry, today's August 29, 2023. Accepting will be Seth Williams.
Seth Wells, yes.
I'm sorry, Seth Wells.
And you can have any of the others that join you as well.
We're usually pretty boisterous, but I don't think we can beat the ladies in leather today. I just wanted to take a brief moment and make another request. First, I'd like to thank my first vice, Jeanetta Andrepon from Post 33, my finance officer, Thea Davis, from Post 33, Bruce Hamilton, who is our historian. And we have another legionnaire in the back, Ms. Kira Tucker from Post 7 in Port Arthur. And we also have Ms. Mary Williams, a fellow veteran advocate. And we just wanted to take a moment to remind us to take just a second. And Mr. Duryo, yes, sir.
Post 817.
Post 817, yes, sir. Legionnaires in the house. So we appreciate that. We just wanted to take a moment to remind all of us as a community that we need to take a moment on September 11 to remember those that we lost. And there are some very specific ways that the American Legion asks us to do that. And we make that request specifically to our houses of worship upcoming. The American Legion asks that on the Sunday prior to September 11 in every house of worship, that time be taken to pause and remember those men and women in uniform who were killed September 11, 2001, as well as those who have lost their lives in the ongoing war against terrorism. Secondly, on September 11, the American Legion asks for each house of worship to ring its bells at 8:45 local time in remembrance of those that died on American Airlines Flight 1192 Americans. 9:03 a.m. in remembrance of those who died when United Airlines Flight 175 struck the South Tower, 65 Americans. 9:43 a.m. in remembrance of those who died when American Airlines Flight 77 struck the Pentagon, 64 Americans. 10 a.m. in remembrance of those who died when United Airlines Flight 93 crashed near Shanksville, Pennsylvania, 44 Americans. And at noon, in remembrance of all those lost to acts of terrorism. In total, the attack that day took 2,970 sent victims along with 19 hijackers. But of course, the reverberations of that have been felt throughout the world and especially our generation of veterans. Or we're multi-generational, so I'll say my generation. No offense to Joni here, I heard that. It was, it's a watershed moment in our generation. I was in my second week of college. My father, a Vietnam Marine, called me and said, turn on the TV, we're under attack. And immediately, my family went back to war because my brother was a second lieutenant of Marines at the time. So it affected our family greatly, just not that day, but into the future. It still affects many of our veterans today. And I'm so glad we talked about mental health earlier today. September is also Suicide Awareness Prevention Month. And just a quick note that we've lost 120,000 veterans since 2001 to 2020 and service members to suicide. We've lost 65,000 to 70,000 in combat operations since 1955. So we've lost nearly twice as many veterans and service members to suicide in the past 20 years than we have to combat operations over the last 65. So we have a real issue that we need to deal with. And September 11 is obviously where some of that unfortunately started. So we just wanted to come out and let our community know that we're thinking of the men and women and the families from that day and every veteran moving forward. Unfortunately, Mr. Mayor, I have a blue star flag on order that I will present to you when it comes in. And at your discretion, we would appreciate you flying that. And the blue star flag represents a family with a service member who was deployed. So that's just a reminder to our community that whenever one American is deployed, we all have a family member deployed because we're one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. So thank you very much for allowing us to be here today, and God bless America.
God bless you. Thank you.
Perfect. All right, you ready? One, two. One more. One, two. Thank you.
For those that were here for presentations and proclamations, if you would like to leave, now is the time to do so. And thank you so much for coming. Now is the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. You may make public comments on the consent agenda and regular agenda items 1 through 6. You may also speak on matters of public concern. Please be reminded that you only be permitted to speak one time. We are no longer accepting green slips. Citizens may now show up to speak using the kiosk in the back of the room. There will be a city employee there to assist you in signing up for the rest of this month. And so the next meeting, there won't be an employee back there, but it's pretty easy to work with. The city clerk will call your name when it's your time to speak. When you approach the podium, please say your address, city, and state. We would appreciate it if you would, well, we ask that you do keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up.
Colton Sharp, public comments.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Counsel, staff. I'm here to speak on behalf of Southeast Texas Crime Stoppers Organization to request counsel to consider placing Crime Stopper logo stickers on every city vehicle. In each of your goals and priorities that you listed this year, and even in the strategic plan, each one of you stated community safety is one of your top priorities. And by placing these stickers on each of the city vehicles, it will elevate community awareness to crime. Our Crime Stoppers of Southeast Texas was established November 1, 1981. Crime Stoppers encourages members of our community to assist local law enforcement agencies in the fight against crime by overcoming the two key elements that inhibit community involvement, and that's fear and apathy. Crime Stoppers encourage citizens in the community to volunteer vital information helpful to law enforcement agencies to fight crime in our communities. Some may ask the question, does Crime Stopper works? The answer is quite simple, yes. The program has enjoyed great success, both in an average conviction rate of 95% of cases solved by Crime Stoppers tips. Since its inception, the Crime Stoppers have received over 14,000 tips. 3,833 arrests have been made. 6,361 cases have been cleared. Almost $700,000 of reward money have been paid. Almost $4.7 million in property have been recovered. $2.6 million in drugs have been seized for a total of $7.4 million that has been recovered. Crime Stoppers have also expanded to our schools that can help prevent dangerous and potentially life-threatening situations from occurring among our student populations, both on and off the campuses. Reports of bullying, cyberbullying, truancy, sexual misconduct, suicide hindrance, animal cruelty, illegal drugs, weapons, and human trafficking, theft, child abuse, date violence, and more can all be submitted through the anonymous tips reporting system. Providing our students an opportunity to help their schools, communities, and peers by discreetly reporting suspicious behavior or criminal activity allows students to proactively become part of their school's safety programs. Now, Crime Stoppers of Southeast Texas is a nonprofit organization and is funded by private donations and fundraising. No tax dollars are involved. So what we're asking for today is your consideration to put the Crime Stoppers logo stickers on each and every vehicle as they go throughout our community to give awareness to crime. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Pastor Sharp.
Addie Allen, public comments? Are we doing the, are we still accepting comments at the end? She would like to speak at the end. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Now, approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Approval for the consent agenda, any discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion is carried. Next, Mr. City Manager, will you please read item number one?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, consider a resolution awarding hotel occupancy tax grant awards for the 2023 grant cycle. You have attachment recommendations from the Beaumont Convention and Visitors Bureau Review Committee in regards to this. And we have Mr. Chris Boone, who can address any questions or provide information along with Mr. Dean Conwell.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor and counsel, as the manager mentioned, you may recall last week, we had presentations on the hot hotel occupancy tax application process from the applicants. Following that on Thursday, the committee... Following that on Thursday, the, the recommend, the committee for this process met. And the committee, just for the, your benefit and the benefit of the public, is comprised of the Chair and past Chair of the Convention Visitors Bureau, a legal representative from the City of Beaumont, City of Beaumont Finance Representative, Executive Director to the Beaumont Convention and Visitors Bureau, as well as Assistant City Manager. Again, the committee met and in your packet and shown on the screen here are the recommendations of that committee. You'll see in the first column is the amount requested. You'll see just for some background, the second column represents what was in, in terms of hot tax, what was provided last year. And then the third column highlighted in blue is what the committee recommended. You also see in your, your packet, there is a summary of what each project consisted of on the following page. And then the follow, and then the last two pages in your packet is just some summary comments that were captured during the discussion of the committee to try to give you a flavor of why the recommendations outlined in that third column are as they were. And I should point out that representatives from most of the applicants are in the audience if you have specific questions about their programs or operations or application.
Is there a motion for item number one?
Move to approve.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda. Any discussion?
Item one.
Item one. Excuse me. Yes, Councilman Turner.
This question is just for staff and me to get a better clear understanding of how this works. Just a few questions. So I make sure I understand what we're actually voting on and what's the criteria. When we look at this hot tax funding, what's the criteria exactly? What are we looking for from a city standpoint while we're making this decision on how we're going to fund these different organizations?
Yes, sir. So the hot tax, hotel occupancy tax program is, is basically defined by the state. It's at the discretion of cities whether or not they want to collect it and distribute it. However, if they do, they've got to, of course, follow the guidelines of the program that's set out by the, the state. And so Chapter 351 of the Tax Code does line, basically define what the program says. And it's really a two-part test. So whenever you look at any application or use of these funds, you've got to comply with a two-part test. Part one, or criteria one, is that every expenditure enhance and promotes tourism and the convention and hotel industry. And secondly, every expenditure must fit into one of nine categories. And quickly, I'll just summarize. One is the improvement or maintenance of a convention center, the operation of convention registration, advertising, solicitation, or promotion of tourists and convention delegates, promotion of the arts. So that includes instrumental, vocal, music, drama, folk art, creative writing, architecture, design, et cetera, et cetera. The fifth category is historic restoration or preservation programs. The sixth is promotional expenses for a sporting event. The seventh category is funding the enhancement or upgrading of existing sports facilities or sports fields. And the eighth criteria is transportation systems for tourists. And then the final category is signage, directing tourists to sites and attraction that are, attractions that are visited frequently by hotel guests in the municipality. And again, that last phrase kind of sums it back, takes it back to that first criteria, which is it's got to be tied to tourism and what we colloquially refer to as heads and beds. So in other words, getting folks to your city, but really making sure they stay long enough or they're here for a reason where they, where they spend the night. And so that's the, that's the statutory requirement for how we spend the funds.
Okay, Mayor, it's, it's three questions. I kind of had them lined up. So that gives me a better understanding. And I kind of want to know the history of the funding and how much we gave in the past, also to get a better understanding. And I see the funding has increased since I got the data from 2001. But in 2008 to 2013, it was a little bit over, it was right around $332,000. Is, is it a reason? Or can you explain how the funding has occurred?
Our executive director of the CBB, Dean Conwell, is here. He may have a better history on that. So I'm not sure if it's amount collected or if we've allocated different funds. Dean, do you have any thoughts on that?
It's been a rather archaic program. It started long before I got here that there were different entities that would receive dollars, hotel tax dollars. We weren't even totally sure how they were, how they were spending it. But that's just the way it's always been. Now we feel like we should do things the proper way. Christina's been working with like 25 or 30 different cities to work on this grant process. She's probably worked about 100 hours on it. We came up with the committee. I think they did a good job. The bottom line, it all needs to go to heads and beds because if we don't have those dollars, that generate dollars, we can't give money to these different entities. So there are six more applicants that applied this year. I think most of them are pretty much deserving. There was no reason, some of them should have been receiving all this money all along. As long as everyone's going to fill up hotel rooms, that's basically the bottom line. But I'm not sure I answered your question.
You actually did, Dean. So thank you. And my, my follow-up question is, you know, ideally, I think you guys did a very good job of spreading it out. It looks like you took care of pretty much somewhat everybody who asked. It may not have been what everybody requested, but it was spread it out well. So my follow-up question was, what are some things that you think we can do as a city, you or Christina, to put us in position to actually be in a position to give more revenue or be in a position to raise this fund or just bring more revenue to Beaumont? What do you guys think we can do better?
Just, you know, budgets are very tight. I think most, all the departments had their, had their budgets cut. We had ours cut pretty, pretty drastically. If, if the CBB had more dollars, we'd be willing to provide more grants to the, to the different entities as long as they're filling up the hotels. You know, we work very, very closely with a lot of these museums. We know how important they are. A lot of these different groups, Mural Fest, some of the other groups, it's just Mardi Gras. It's just, we're, we're, we're lacking in big events, multiple day events here in Beaumont. And somehow, we need to start having multiple day events so people will spend the night and spend money, not only in the hotels, but it'll generate sales tax.
Kenny, I think lastly, you brought up at one point that for these multiple, multiple day events, and somewhere like Mural Fest and Mardi Gras, it's ways the city can still help. Since we did cut that funding that was allocated through our events department, there's still other ways we can, we can assist and work with these different entities.
All right, if you, I mentioned about in-kind services. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, there, there, we can, you know, we have other things, force accounts, which is city services or whatever, or equipment we use for events and things that we might could assist or let events that qualify, bar, et cetera. But basically through in-kind services, but not dollars.
Okay, thank you. We always talk a lot about lack, lack of population growth. But it, really, it all starts with a visit. When visitors come to your city, if they have a good time, they'll tell their friends. They'll bring their friends next time. If they really like the city, maybe they'll relocate here, start a business here. So it's all about getting new people into town. And that's what we, that's what we try to do.
Yeah, Dean, I'm in support of that. That's why I just wanted to know your, you guys' opinion on some things that we can do as a city to just support your department. I think y'all doing a great job.
Thanks. Well, thank, thank Freddie and her sales team for bringing the ladies in leather because they were getting so much, so many more dollars from other cities, but they decided to come here. And that's really, it's, hard work's been paying off. So thank you all so much.
Thank you, Dean. And I, I want to also comment, as people are listening and y'all, you had to comment about the reduction in budget, you know, as the cost of everything, everybody's household here with inflation and the cost of all goods and not seeing the revenue grow at the same amount, we at the city are experiencing the same thing. Everybody in their household is. And we're coming up with creative ways to address that. And I want to thank this committee and all the hours that they put in because a lot of time has been put into this. And many of those people aren't on the payroll of the salary, of the, of the city. And they are involved in the Convention and Visitors Bureau and what, what that translates to in terms of dollars. And I just want to agree that we have quality of life issues to attract people here and to keep people here are very important. So thank you for the presentation and the hard work y'all put in. Councilman Getz.
Thank you, Mayor. Dean, first, I want to say thank you to you and your committee for explaining the methodology that you used to come up with some of these numbers. And your explanations does shed a light on how, how some of this was derived. But even so, I, I need to drill down a little bit further. And I, I don't want to be perceived as calling any of these organizations out, but I have some more specific questions that I need to have answered before I cast my vote. And one of them is related to the Downtown Beaumont Cultural Arts District. And so I guess, Ms. Barrett, are you here for them? Okay, so, did the Downtown Beaumont Cultural Arts District obtain grants or help facilitate the obtaining of grants for any of these, yes, please come up, for any of these other organizations in the, in the community?
Yes. The Art Museum of Southeast Texas, Boomtown Film and, well, through the Southeast Texas Arts Council, the Boomtown Film Society also put on a project this past year. And we also, not this, yeah, the Downtown Beaumont Cultural Arts District itself helped with the Beaumont Mural Fest this past year. The year before, C-TAC engaged in a mural festival or a mural project of its own.
Okay, so I guess what I'm trying to also understand is how, how does the Downtown Beaumont Cultural Arts District put heads and bets?
By, well, what they do is encourage these organizations to access these funds from Texas Commission on the Arts. Texas Commission on the Arts really emphasizes that these events and exhibits and performances all focus on tourism-related projects so that they will draw in tourists. The idea is to bring outsiders into downtown. And that's DBCAD's job is to encourage everyone. No one can do a project in Beaumont inside the district without district approval.
Okay, well, that's important to know. I did not know that. Is there any way that y'all actually have to track your people that are staying in Beaumont as a tourist?
I think we can now. I have to fill out a report every year and provide those numbers to TCA. I was under the impression I could access some of those numbers through a system that the CBB uses. But I think if, at the same time, each of the organizations that take advantage of this program the state offers, they also have to send a report to Texas Commission on the Arts and report on those numbers. And one of those numbers is how many tourists.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions I had for Ms. Barrett unless somebody else does. I do have another area that I'd like to inquire about. And Mr. Boone, one of the things that you said that these funds could be used for is signage. So when you drive on I-10 from Houston towards Baton Rouge or vice versa, the only signage I really see is for the promotion of burning. CBB has a sign out, a billboard out there. None of the museums individually that I can recall for many years has any signage out there to try to lure people to come off I-10 and visit our museums. And I think we need to think about that because we all know here as a council that we're looking at and investigating putting a downtown hotel and changing the civic center into a convention center. And along with that, there's something else that we're going to have to consider. And that's what else can we offer to make people want to come downtown? And when you look around, you see that we have a number of museums downtown. And in my experience in trying to get the Battleship Texas to come to Beaumont, I learned that a lot of these museums are siloed. They're doing their own thing and not talking a whole lot to one another. I think that there needs to be more collaboration between them. I think there needs to be more signage to encourage visitors to come downtown. And I think that that presents itself with a, a built-in opportunity to encourage tourism. It's like when you go to the Houston Museum District, you can spend a day out there, go into all the museums. Now, I'm not saying that our museums or the Houston Museum District, but we have some pretty darn good museums. And a lot of people right here in Beaumont don't go, much less people off the interstate. We need to promote those in some way to give people a reason to pull off and, and come downtown. And if we can use some of this money to, to do that, I would encourage that.
Thank you, Councilman Getz. Councilman Fellshaw?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I know you alluded to this, Mayor, but for those of you that are sitting in the audience that are actually applying for these funds, I, I know that there's probably some disappointment as you see the cuts. But I, reading the comments from the committee, they speak, they're, they're so complimentary of these different programs, and not to elevate one above the other, but like the Mural Fest, they were so positive about the Mural Fest and the impact it has on the city. But these cuts are due to budget constraints and just the increase of applicants. I, I just won't, just to, to say that, that I, this council believes in what's being done here. It's just, there's just not enough money.
Well said.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other discussion? All right, at this point, all in favor of approving item number one, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Thank you. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number two?
Counsel considered ordinance amending ordinance number 23-056, a request for a rezoning from residential single-family dwelling to residential multiple-family dwelling, highest density, or a more restrictive district for property located north of 2360, 2360 South Major Drive. And recommendation is approval of the amended ordinance.
There's a motion for item number two. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Councilman Neal, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Durio, there's a motion and a second for approval of item number two. Any discussion? Councilman Getz?
What happens if this motion fails? Is this just a matter of nomenclature? Or is it actually up again for consideration about putting apartments over there on Major Drive? I guess that's per legal.
So I guess, just to understand your question, if it fails, then it's not rezoned. So if it, this particular one is just an, an error, but it's amending an ordinance. So typically, council has already approved, approved the ordinance, but I believe there was a, the wrong address. And so we amended or would have rezoned the wrong address. So this is a correction to that. But if you don't do that, then the area that was requested to be rezoned would not be rezoned. And then we would need to repeal that previous ordinance so that that area is not rezoned incorrectly.
So I spoke, we did not have a full council here when that came before us last time. We do now. And I spoke against this at the request of many of the neighbors out there that bought their house in a residential, single-family zone. They either built their house or bought their house there. They didn't buy their property with the expectation that an apartment complex was going to be built that would be literally in some of their backyards. backyards. And once that happened, I was contacted by many other neighbors out there that did not get notice of the hearing before planning and zoning because we only go out 200 feet. And to a person, they all spoke against bringing in an apartment complex out there. And so, again, I wasn't expecting to have a second bite at the apple here, but since I do, I have to, again, appeal to my fellow council members, what are we doing in bringing in another, still another? I think, last time I said, I asked, there was either 13 or 14 apartment complexes on Major Drive already with more in the pipeline. We need more residential, single-family housing. We don't need more apartment complexes, especially on Major Drive where there's already way too many. So, I can't support this, and I won't support it. I didn't support it then. I'm not going to support it now.
Thank you, Councilman Getz. Councilman Neal?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Getz, I agree with what you're saying, but the problem now is, and I didn't support this project either, but the problem is, is that they've already been told to proceed with this, and this is just more of a correction on a city screw-up, anything, I believe.
So, the address was wrong in the original memo, therefore, it was transposed wrong in the original ordinance. And so, it was a typo. But because a typo was so, because a proper address wasn't properly noticed, it does have to go. Traditionally, there's an error in the memo or in the ordinance that's minor. It can just be corrected minorly, but because the address wasn't properly advertised in the posting, that's why it had to come back to council.
So, was the, was it properly sent out to the, to the citizens whenever it came before planning and zoning, as far as the right address?
Yes, the original, everything that was advertised and sent to the neighbors was the correct address.
All right, thank you.
Is that it, Councilman Neal? Councilman Fellshaw?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree, Councilman Getz. I, we need more single-family dwellings. And I don't know how we can attract that. But the question again, Chris, and I think we've asked this to you before, is there a demand in our, in our area for this type of housing? As far as we know, I mean, I know your information is limited, but I've heard you speak to that before. Is there, do we feel as a city that there is a demand for more apartments?
I'll just restate kind of what was before, which is, well, we've been told, because we don't get that kind of market data, we just don't demand it. But we can do is, is as that market data is presented to, for example, Texas Department of Housing Community Affairs as they apply for tax credits, we can get that. And we have different sources. We've always been under the impression, when you're over 90% occupancy, that indicates a demand for multifamily. As mentioned last time, we've seen a drop below that 90%. Now, it's still in the high 80s, but it is below 90. So, is there a demand? You know, I don't know. But also, as discussed last time, what we're talking about here, yes, there's a proposed apartment complex attached to the application. However, what's before you today is not the specific use permit to say yea or nay to the apartment complex. It's whether or not this is an appropriate zoning district for that area, which might allow that complex. So, my point being is, it could be approved, and they never build this complex, or they build something different. So, I just wanted to point that out.
I just want to make one correction. The property address was correct. It was just the description. The word north was left out. So, wasn't, that's the big thing, and that's a major, it's not a minor thing. So, the property address was correct and was properly advertised, but the word north was left out of the description. So, where it says located north of was not included.
Well, and I would love to see this as a subdivision going in with single-family dwellings, but it's not. So, it's like, we have to take the growth where we can get it. Beaumont needs growth. And if this is what's before us now, then it is what it is. Thank you.
And I want to speak in terms of the need. Being in the mortgage business, I do have a good view of that. And I believe there is a need, and I believe the fact that they are desiring to build that, it's as with everything else. As things get older, people like to live in newer stuff. And as it's available, they'll do that. And how we continue to rehab the city, but in terms of at what point we're going to have too many, if we could, if, if we grow, we won't ever have too many. And people will build the homes. But there, there's got to be the supply and demand for the building of the homes as well, and the cost of construction.
So,
Councilman Getz.
We talked about growth just a minute ago. And as Mr. Boone said, we are seeing now a decrease in demand if our apartments, it's down below the 90%. What happens here really isn't growth. It's people moving around. For instance, you will see frequently, people move out of apartment complexes that may be in an older part of town because there's something newer and shinier and brighter that come up, and they're built over on Major Drive. And so, what happens is, there becomes an increased vacancy rate in some of the older apartment complexes, and they start falling into disrepair because there's no longer the revenues being brought in to properly maintain the apartments, which leads to blight in some of the older parts of town. And they will be in this apartment complex for a while until, you know, that cycle starts to repeat itself. It might take a long time since they're brand new. But I don't think you're really seeing growth, Councilmember Fellshaw. I think you're seeing people moving around because we know from our census numbers that we're not growing.
And I, and I agree with that. Part of the, part of growth that I'm speaking to is that there are two-by-fours going up. There's concrete being poured. There's money being spent. There's business taking place. There's, there's workers being employed. And so, agree, I agree with you. At a time when we're stagnant and we're declining as a city, this type of activity is always welcomed because we, we're trying to keep our people working and moving. And hopefully, we continue to move forward. And I would, like I said, I'd love to see this as a single-dwelling subdivision going in, but it's not. And so, I welcome this as opposed to just nothing at all.
Councilman Durio.
Well, for one, there is, he talking about the apartments on, on Major Drive. Well, this is south of College Street. No apartment complex is south of College on Major at all. We can't keep asking developers to come to our city, but if they don't develop the stuff that we like, then we, we say no. And we can't be seen as, well, we'll put apartments in Ward Four, but we won't put apartments in Ward Two. I mean, that's, that's just, just not right, especially when there's a need. And he said, there is a need. That's, there's no doubt there is a need. And those apartment complexes, I'm, I'm pretty sure they're going to have to be within code, probably going to be some very nice buildings. And some of the folks, when you say moving around, it's some of the folks, you know, that might live on other parts of the city. When they reach 18, 19, 20 years old, then they're moving, and they're finding their own place. And they might move on another side of town. But just like Councilman Fellshaw said, it's two-by-fours going up, it's concrete being poured, that's growth. And we can very well try to grow our city and ask people, developers, to come in and say, hey, let's do this. Let's, I want to do this. And you say, no, that's not what we want. Then they're not, they're going to stop coming.
One last point.
Mike, excuse me, Councilman Getz. Let's go to Councilman Turner next.
Mr. Williams, my concern is, I looked at a article that we got from the city of Waco and the city of Fort Worth, where with these different hotels and apartments, they set standards of what they were willing to allow in their city, how they want to look, the amenities, et cetera. And it kind of speaks to what Councilman Durio stated earlier. Even though they're leaving sometimes the older part of the town to move to the new growth, I'm still concerned about the look and the aesthetics of what they leave in the older parts of town. So, eventually, we know you'll run out of room to grow in Beaumont, and you'll start developing those older parts of town. I'd kind of like to see if it's possible, if you've ever seen standards in place where we can have an expectation of how we want it and what all you want to be there. Have you ever seen things like that?
Chris, or Demi, somebody might can correct me, but yeah, you can set standards on construction standards and, and cities, in parts of town. You can create corridors for certain types of construction criteria, et cetera. So, it can be done. They might have something different to say, but been in places where we definitely did, did that.
Was it beneficial to do things like that, specifically, especially helping some of these areas where they're moving out of? Was it helpful to kind of keep your city looking well overall?
Yeah, well, it's kind of what you want that area to become or look like, et cetera. So, yeah, it can be beneficial if it's what the council identifies, that they want to create, how they want an area to look, or the city to look.
Well, I would be in support of that because my concern is, yeah, we getting new growth and new apartments, but I'm real concerned about the areas that they're leaving, which are older parts of town that are kind of left abandoned and sometimes not developed. So, I am concerned about that, and I am in support of looking at options.
Thank you, Councilman Turner. Councilman Getz and Councilman Durio.
So, Councilman Durio, we are building apartments in Ward Two. We're about, we just opened a huge apartment complex right next to Westbrook High School. It's a senior affordable income apartment complex. We also built an apartment complex behind 49. So, we do have apartments in addition to the existing inventory of apartments, which are many, many, many already in Ward Two. And Councilmember Fellshaw, we're not voting today on whether or not we want to put in an apartment complex. You made the statement that we can't really control whether or not something is a single-family or multifamily. Well, we can through zoning. And it's, the question before us today is, should we rezone from residential, single-family to residential, multiple-family? Not whether or not we should allow an apartment complex to come in. And my point is that, yes, we can control what happens with regard to whether or not we want more residential, single-family dwellings to be built as opposed to apartments by maintaining the zoning as it already exists and as the people that already bought their houses or built their houses out there had in mind when they bought or built their house out there. They bought their house in a residential, single-family zone, expecting that to continue to exist. And now, we come along and say, well, sorry, we're changing. I don't think that's right.
Thank you, Councilman Getz. Councilman Durio.
Mr. Boone, this rezoning, how big of an area will it affect? Is it just this property or is it the whole neighborhood?
It's just this property, the property in question.
Okay. And Mr. Williams, these, I think we discussed this before. If you could clarify or repeat it for me, there's a program where these apartment complexes are built where they can give money, like to the parks and stuff like that, to help with parks in that area? We're bringing in a bunch of folks?
Councilmember, a report was given by staff on different ways that cities could create revenues. And one of those talked about was a, like a parks in lieu of, parks in lieu of fee, whereby when apartments are built, there's an amount that's charged to the developer to pay into the fund to create, that can pay toward us creating or using exist, enhancing existing park space. You know, kind of the thinking of this is that apartments come in, they bring in sometimes large number of people, but they don't provide recreational or park space for their, for their tenants. Some will bill, if it's built onto the property, it's okay if you, if you put that in place. If they provided on their property themselves, they don't have to pay into a park in lieu of fee. But if they don't, the city can have a, a parks in lieu of fee that they can pay into for the city to enhance or provide parks opportunities in that neighborhood.
So, is that something that we could do, like when they come to apply for their permits and stuff like that?
Yeah, you would have to pass an ordinance, I think it's an ordinance, that it would be there for all, all that applied. Either they provide park space on their property or they could pay into the parks in lieu of fee. So, it would just be by ordinance, and we would just enforce the ordinance when they came in to apply before their fine permit or, or CO was issued, they had to pay the money.
Thank you. Councilman Neal, then Councilman Samuel.
Mr. Boone, just to clarify, before a permit is issued for an apartment complex, that will come back before council, correct?
No, sir.
It will not?
No, sir. It would, if it gets rezoned to RMH, it would be by, by right. So, it would be just a permitting question.
Okay. So, my next question, do other cities have apartment zoning rules or ordinances that, that a council can start setting where they would like to see growth or how they would like to see it as far as apartment complexes go?
Yes, sir, through zoning.
It's on a comprehensive plan. So, you kind of identifying that comprehensive plan, where would you like to have apartments or residential or commercial, industrial on, as a map. It's, it's kind of a guide. It's not set in stone, but it provides guidance for whenever you want to make zoning decisions.
So, I think since, this is just my personal opinion, since this has already been voted on, and a month ago, we already told the developers that this was going to be approved. I struggle, even though I don't like an apartment complex going out there, I struggle with the fact that we already told whoever this is that it's approved, and now we're just doing a correction, the cleanup paperwork. But I would like to see us as a council have an open discussion here sooner than later on how we can better plan for apartments throughout the city and give a little more thought to it.
Okay. And, and either Todd or Chris can help me. I'm not sure if the comp plan made, we took it out of the budget.
Yes, sir, just to, if I could just,
Go ahead.
Yeah, just so we, we had talked about that at the last meeting, was, was comprehensive plan. I don't think that made the proposed budget. One idea, though, is it's possible that we could do a zoning study along this corridor because we are getting so many applications. And that, that could run all the way from, you know, this area all the way to 104, 105 rather, just because we are getting so many, so many applications. So, in other words, there would be kind of a mini comp plan where you said, okay, what do we want to see develop along this corridor? And to the points about design, to the points about whether you have, you know, what density of apartments, where do you want just single-family, et cetera, et cetera.
Councilman Samuel.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a part of a comprehensive plan that's been going on for years. And we have to look at, in my opinion, I look at what it was, what it is now, and what, what we hope it to be. As we look throughout our city, the higher density is along the major corridors. And Major Drive is one of the major corridors that extend across Beaumont, particularly in the west. Right now, we're going through a phase in which, single-family dwellings, it's somewhat of a lull, as I understand, because of interest rates. But that, too, will change. So, we have to continue to be visionary. Yes, we went through a period in which we saw population decrease, but we can't be blinded that there's still a need for housing in Beaumont, single-family as well as multifamily. I just hope that as we do this, we will look at the impact that it has on all the areas of the city as we're looking at it now. But I do recall on this particular project, the surrounding areas, the immediate surrounding areas, that was minimal impact on some of the properties that directly abutted that property in which the application occurred. So, I just hope that we will look at the growth of our city and our comprehensive So I just hope that we will look at the growth of our city and our comprehensive plan from a holistic standpoint and not from our own personal beliefs of what we want as individuals to happen, but what we want as an overall city, how we want our growth to look and how it impacts all the other areas in our city. So back to my basic point is higher density is normally on the major arterial streets. Most individuals would not look to put a single family dwelling on Major Drive, maybe a spinoff to an addition, but that's not where it's going to be on Major Drive. The high density should be to the major arterial streets and that's one of the major arterial streets in the west. And I think that's a consideration that has to be considered.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Gess.
Councilman Samuel, there's several residential divisions that are right off of Major Drive. You know, they, you enter them off of Major Drive and they spin off, as you mentioned, into residential, single family homes. There's no reason why this couldn't be the same. Mr. Boone, you mentioned that we have apartments in the pipeline. Do you happen to have an idea how many and/or any of those also located on Major Drive?
So I think the last time this came before us, I think I estimated 12 complexes from 105 or just north of 105 to this location, all the way, actually all the way to the end of Major. And I went back and counted and there were 15 and that is inclusive of the ones that have come online or are coming online as we speak. In the last couple of years, we've added, I believe, 500 units. The closest to this location is just north of college and it's about 1.5 miles.
Ms. Attorney, Councilmember Neil has spoken a couple of times as to the fact that this came before council before and it was approved at that, not unanimously, but it was approved. And he's concerned about whether or not the developer, how that would impact this out of town developer that wants to come in and do this, would the city incur any legal liability if this was not approved?
So if you're asking me, do they have a legal justified claim against the city? My answer would be possibly, just because they're probably listening. But I can tell you that there is a arguable claim for detrimental reliance. They were given issue permits and allowed to proceed with this. And if they have invested any considerable funds in connection with that, then yes, possibly.
Okay.
Councilman Samuel.
I'd like to call for the question.
Okay, all in, all in favor of approving item number two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion is carried. City manager, may we have the reading of item number three?
Yes, Mayor. Council consider a resolution authorizing a contract with C-Tex Construction Corporation from Beaumont for the citywide emergency water main repairs contract. And staff is recommending approval of the resolution and this is to help assist with the many water breaks due to the drought.
Is there a motion for item number three?
So moved to approve.
It's been moved and it's been seconded by Councilman Samuel. Any discussion for item number three? All in favor of approving item number three, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion is carried. May we have the reading of item number four?
Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number one to the contract with Vortex Companies of Houston for the Long Street Grouding Repairs Project and staff is recommending approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number four?
Move to approve.
It's been moved by Councilman Fellshaw.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Durio. There's a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion?
I have some.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Manager, I just kind of want to continue to go on the record that I've been consistent on saying, I think in our bidding process, we need to limit the amount of change orders, you know, prior to the bid, just be transparent up front. I've seen some of these change orders get up to five and six. I'm just not in support of anything honestly bigger than three if we can't figure out. So I just kind of want to see if there's an appetite for other council members to at least explore, you know, looking at how many of these change orders we get, because I mean, it can get pretty financially heavy if we just continue to let them pile up. I've seen some get as high as the five and six and we voted on this. I just want to see if we could put something in place or look into it.
And Councilman Turner, I'd just like to address this one issue. This is regarding the drought and we don't know how long that's going to extend. So I think there are issues that we should consider that, but on something where we're responding to an act of God or an emergency that's occurring, it's, it's going to be ongoing because we don't know when we're going to get rain. But I know we are all praying for rain up here, so I'm sure it's sooner than later. Yes, sir. Councilman Durio.
So on these type of deals, if we just say, if it's not like, say it's pipe bursting or something that doesn't have to do with an emergency or drought and they come to a emergency or drought and they come to us and they ask for more money and a change order and we decline it and say, no, does the project just stop? Or do we have to find somebody else to do it or just, is the project just incomplete?
Well, in this case, the vendor went and performed ground penetrating radar the entire length of, of Long Street. So we attempted with the best available technology we knew of to determine how many voids existed alongside that, that sewer line and estimate the amount of grout that would be required to fill those voids and stabilize around that storm drain. Unfortunately, it's not an exact science. It's underground. Their ground penetrating radar is not 100% perfect. So when they got out there and they actually got to injecting the grout, it turned out that there was a additional quantity necessary to complete the work. To your question, if we, you know, told them we weren't going to pay for any more, then we would be left with voids along that storm drain line, which we don't want.
Thank you, Bart.
I'm sorry, if I could just interject real quickly to address some concerns that Councilman Turner brought up. We did have our contracts reviewed, our bid specs reviewed by some contract attorneys just to see what we can do to shore up our documents and they came back very positive. The, the takeaway from the conversation that we had is that if the city wants less change orders, then we have to assume more risk upfront. So what would that look like? That would look like higher bid prices for projects. And I don't know how many of you work for contracts, no offense, Councilman Neil, but they're going to find a way to spend that money. So if we come back with higher contracts, higher contract prices, the idea that we would get a lot of money back would probably not necessarily be the case. There'll be work to be done. So a lot of the time when we estimate these, we have these change orders, what we see is that there was additional work that was not anticipated based on when they opened up the ground. We have, as Bart had mentioned, tried to use some additional resources to try to minimize that cost. But once you get into the ground and once you start construction on a lot of these projects, it's, it can kind of expand. And so in some of our more situations where we have emergency repairs or, or things that come up that we need to fix immediately, we haven't had the time to go out and really assess what that project is going to cost. And so we just do a general estimate. I'll use the example, the roof at the police station or the roof at the art museum, when they got into there and they started doing that work, they were like, oh, we also need to replace this lining, which is an additional cost, which is something that we hadn't investigated for ourselves, so we weren't prepared for that also. So there are a lot of times when we start, we do these change orders, it's just because there's work that we didn't anticipate having to do so that we didn't include that in our bid specs. But it's necessary to do the job and do the job correctly. And there's also a situation where the work is just more extensive with they've opened it up. But the end result is if we want to see less change orders, then we need to assume more risk upfront in order for, in order to get respectable, reliable bids from reputable companies who want to do the work because they're not going to want to miss out. And so if we're telling them we're not going to accept any change orders, then I don't think that we'll have people who will want to do work for us because they don't want to put their name on projects that aren't done properly.
To, to Attorney Reed's point on this project, if we'd had reached out to Vortex and told them we wanted a fixed bid to inject the necessary grout along Long Street regardless of how much it was, then they would have put an inflationary figure on that initial estimate because of the uncertainty. So we would have come in with a higher initial price because they knew they might end up having more grout in there.
And, and to my point, I totally understand that. I just want to be clear on what I'm asking. I have no problem with a change order, maybe two change orders. My comment was, we have voted on things and I'm just bringing it up again, where we had five, six, seven change orders and that's when it kind of becomes an issue for me. So I understand what you guys are saying, I totally do, but.
Throw one more, one more word of caution on this though. Projects are not all of the same length. So if you get to something the size of Colliers Ferry Pump Station where we're under construction for years, there's going to probably be a larger number of change orders. If you're in a project that's 30, 90 days, more than likely, yes, there'll be a very small or no change orders on that project, but.
Councilman Neil?
Thank you. Just to clarify, maybe from a contractor's standpoint, the contractor only bids what the plans and specifications call for. So if the city's putting uncomplete documents out for people to bid on, then the contractor is not going to pick it up and there is going to be change orders. No different than the roof thing here a couple of weeks ago where the installation now has to be changed out. The contractor was never told to bid installation. So by default, it's going to be a change order if the, if the city wants it. And if not, so be it, but the work won't get done.
Got you. Just want to tighten up possible, that's all.
Then, then we need to tighten up the drones and specifications from the city side.
I'm with it.
All right, Council, uh, city manager?
Yeah, point well taken. We understand that for sure. And so we'll look at different ways that we can help with that. Typically the older the project, the more surprises you find when you start ripping into stuff and tearing stuff out. It's like an old house. Once you tear the wall out, you're going to find something you probably didn't expect in there. But we'll do what we can to make sure that we're creating apples to apples comparisons in our specs and, and, you know, what we're looking for. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. There's no other discussion. All in favor of approving item number four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number five, please?
Council consider a resolution approving the emergency repair of a pump for Lawson's pump station and staff is recommending approval of the resolution to be paid out of the capital program.
Is there a motion for item number five?
Move to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for approval for item number five. Any discussion? Councilman Neil, then Councilman Durio.
Yes, sir. The pump was installed on Friday.
And everything's working well on it?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Councilman Gess?
This pumping installed does not increase our pumping capacity at Lawson's, does it?
Not greatly. It, it gives us a little bit more that we can put through, but more importantly, it gives us that redundancy.
I understand.
So if we have a problem, you know, we're not, because with two pumps, if we lost one of them, we would greatly reduce our pump capacity. But with three, we have the ability to shut one down if need be.
Yeah, that's, that's what I understand also, but the drought and the demand of water has caused us to have to use more water out of the wells that we have in Harden County. And, you know, it was my hope that by having another pump, it would somehow increase our capacity out of the river. But you're saying that's not really going to matter a whole lot?
We're pumping 30 plus out of the river. That's probably about what we can get out of Lawson's, you know, somewhere in that range, low 30s.
And is that because there's some impediment to, what's, what is the impediment to getting more water out of the river?
That's the max pump capacity out of that pump station. That's all we can push with those pumps through that pipeline to the Pine Street plant currently.
So the impediment would be the pipeline because more pumps should be enabled to increase your capacity if you have a bigger pipeline, I would think.
Pipeline was impacted during, during Harvey. We did document that there was a reduction in flow through that after Harvey impacted it. That's part of our FEMA project to address that pipeline and our rationale for getting the FEMA money to fix that pipeline. But unfortunately, we can't do anything with it. We can't take Lawson's out of service to address anything until we get the Colliers Ferry Pump Station up.
Thank you.
Councilman Durio?
So Bart, all this work has already been done in this resolution?
Yes, sir.
So explain to me why we come for approval after it's done?
Well, if it's an emergency, we're allowed to move forward expeditiously, which this was, because it was related to the water system. But we still by state law have to come to council for approval on the expenditure. And so that's what we're doing today.
All right, thank you.
All in favor of approving item number five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. City manager, may we have the reading of item number six?
Yes. Council to consider rewording Proposition A and eliminating Proposition B on the City of Beaumont Charter changes. And there's recommended, recommendation of approval of the ordinance and there was just a rewording of Prop. A and eliminating B.
Okay, is there a motion for item number six?
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for approval of item number six. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Fellshaw.
I'd like to speak to the council and maybe help them understand why myself and Councilman Durio requested that this be brought back to the council. I know that there are two schools of thought on this council and our community regarding term limits. There's the one school that believes in term limits. There's the other school that doesn't and is more concerned about institutional knowledge and maintaining that consistency and that continuity on the council. I feel that this proposal that's before you is a compromise and perhaps can speak to both concerns. Again, it's a four-year term with a three-term limit, which gives you 12 years per position or office. So you can run for a ward. If you're elected, after 12 years, you have to step out. It is a term limit. You can never go back to that position. You truly term out. But in order to maintain institutional knowledge, that individual could run for another office, being at large or mayor. And then that person could run and if they're elected, they could serve another term, another two, another three, and then they would term out of that position, again, creating an opening, an opportunity for someone new. And so by doing this, I feel that we're able to compromise and pull both groups together. For those of you that won't term limits, then the term limits are there, 12 years per position. Then you have to step away, creating opportunity for someone else. But for those that like institutional knowledge, that individual can move on to another office and run again. And if they're elected, they could continue to contribute to the city. What we approved the other day, Proposition A, is a four-year term, two terms, eight years, and then you have to sit out a term and then you can come back. That's not term limits. That's taking a break and literally you could run for the rest of your life. And so I wasn't sure that we were accomplishing what those of you were wanting term limits. I'm not sure we were accomplishing that. The other thing is, is that with 12 years per office, I feel it gives a individual the opportunity to begin and finish a project. My understanding, like the events center, Lakeside Center, because the purchasing of property, the cleanup, the construction, that was a 10-year process. I don't know how long downtown development is going to take, but I do believe that 12 years gives a individual the opportunity to start and to finish and to maintain that continuity and that. and that institutional knowledge on the council. And then, too, I, I feel like Proposition, Proposition B is somewhat confusing. We're putting two options before the community. I'm concerned it's a little confusing. I've even heard some on this council confused with Proposition B. And it's been my experience, where citizens are confused, they tend to vote no. And so, my hope is that we would consider this four-year term, three-term limit per office, have true term limits, and yet still have the opportunity to maintain that institutional knowledge, eliminate Proposition B, clean it up, and present one proposition at a time to the citizens. And hopefully, they'll be able to, we'll be able to see that, that go through. So, with that said, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Felschaw. Any other discussion? Councilman Turner?
City Attorney, our staff, so everybody's understanding of what we're actually discussing. I understand what Councilman Felschaw just presented. Can someone speak to Proposition B, so the viewers in the community that are watching and people in the crowd may understand what we're talking about right now?
So, in order to speak to B, you have to understand A as well. Proposition A is for increased terms. So, Proposition A creates the ability for, to go from two years to four years and then staggered elections. Currently, we're two years and everyone is elected together. So, Prop. A, as, as written, would require, would increase the terms and would also go to staggered terms. Prop. B is for term limits. And so, if Prop. A passes, then the term limits would be two years, I'm sorry, four years. That would be the length of the term. If it fails, it would be for two years. And so, the term limits would impose there, but it does have a sit-out period, and then you can run again. Also, what happened is that we created, under these current conditions, it's created two places, either Ward or at, in Ward and, and at-large are together, then Mayor is a separate office. And so, that's the, the major, major differences in that when the proposal that's before council today combines both term limits and increased terms into one proposition, which means if I was a voter who supported increased terms but not term limits, then I would vote no, because I don't, I don't want term limits. I just want y'all to keep running it two years, and y'all can stay for in perpetuity. If I was a, a voter who, who wanted term limits but not increased terms, I would have the same situation. So, combining it would make a voter choose between those two options. It also doesn't call for staggered terms either. So, y'all would all still be elected at the same time.
And that, that was what I was trying to get a clear understanding of. When we say institutional knowledge, like you said, at any given time, and no staggered terms, you can still lose the institutional knowledge. And another thing that really concerns me is, you know, what I've had, the reason I ask about certain things is because of what the community kind of asked me for. So, the reason I ask about term limits, that's the questions I got for that option to know if that community has appetite for it. So, when you combine them both and what, and what the community wants us to have the opportunity for longer terms, but they don't like term limits, because it's a 50, we don't know which way this is going. Similar to what Councilmember Felschaw said. So, if you take that Option B away, and we do it this way, would it eliminate them to pick one and not the other?
Yes, sir, because it's, the proposed language combines both term limits and increased terms into one proposition.
Councilman Getz?
Sheree, help me on this. If we were to change this, as Councilmember Felschaw is proposing, doesn't state law require you to have place, places for year terms, so you still have at-large Place One and at-large Place Two?
If you go above two years, yes, sir, you have to have Place One and Place Two.
Okay.
Councilman Felschaw?
Just to speak to Councilman Turner, Proposition B, as you know, as it's already passed, basically what it says is that we would get a two-year term with a four-term limit, eight years total, and then we'd have to step out for two years. And then you could run again. So, as an advocate of term limits, I just, you understand that that's not term limits. You're just taking a break. That individual could run for the rest of their life.
So, so, and, and I'm asking for clarity, so we all on the same page. So, I'm running at-large Place A, and I done my eight years. I step out. Are we saying I can come back and run for at-large Place A again?
That was my understanding, that after two-year break, you could come back and run again.
Yeah, that's the clarity I'm asking for from, from staff.
But see, this proposal here says, you get four years, you get three terms. At the end of 12 years, you're done. You can't come back if you want to. You're out. Creating an empty seat for a new person that would never have a shot otherwise, because we, we know how hard it is to, to unseat an incumbent. And, and I don't, I don't, I don't care for term limits. But for those of you that do, we understand that the reason for that is because we're trying to create opportunity for others. Well, this proposal says, at the end of 12 years, you have to step down from that position or that office. But you have the freedom to run for either mayor, or you could go back and run for a ward. So, there's three offices. I did split them up between Ward and at-large. The other one, they're together. This one, they're split. For I feel that at-large is different than a ward.
Me too.
I know you do. So, my point being, though, is I see this as true term limits with a compromise to try to maintain some kind of institutional knowledge. Mayor?
Thank you, Councilman Felschaw. Councilman Getz, then Councilman Durio.
Again, Sheree, so, let's take a, for instance, let's suppose this proposal by Councilmember Felschaw went into effect, and the citizens approve it. You've got Councilmember Turner here. He's running at-large for Place One. He gets selected three terms, serves us 12 years. He said, I kind of like being at-large, but I'm termed out. I'm going to run for at-large Place Two. Can he do that?
So, technically, unless we, unless council gives direction, the place, the places will be, or the positions would be Ward, at-large, and mayor. It wouldn't make a distinction between Place One or Place Two.
Okay.
But you could.
But we could.
But you could. But right now, the way it's worded is be, it would be, the places would be, or positions, sorry, would be Ward, at-large, mayor.
Councilman Durio?
Well, when it appeared on a ballot, wouldn't, it would still appear as Place One, Place Two. You're talking about if they wanted to run again, like if he was Place One, he couldn't run for Place Two, because that's at-large.
What, what I'm saying is, he, he wouldn't be, it would, it would still count towards his 12. He could, if he wanted to run at Place One, he could. If he wanted to say, I'm going to open up my seat and run against Place Two candidate, he could. But it would still count as him serving in the position for 12 years.
Okay. Also, can we amend this to include staggered terms?
My wish is your command.
Your wish is mine. Okay. I mean. Chris, by institutional knowledge, if it's not staggered, it still can possibly happen. But that's. Yeah.
Are you looking to ask about an amendment?
Yeah, just an amendment or add-ons to, that it's staggered terms.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and have a vote on the amendment. That would be the correct process right there, to amend it to have staggered terms.
So.
Then we would go back and vote on the motion?
If there's a request to amend the current language to include staggered terms, then he, we would need to, according to your rules, we would need to vote on the amendment first and then vote on the regular, the regular item.
All right.
Can, can we talk about what that would look like? You're, you're looking to stagger the terms, or you're, I mean, excuse me, the?
The election.
The election.
Every two years instead of once every four years.
And, and your concern is institutional knowledge?
Yeah, so we're not taking a chance of having a whole new council on one, one election?
Question.
Yeah, Councilman.
Sheree, can, with four-year terms, can't they still do staggered terms?
Yes, but that's not proposed in this language.
I know. Well, I think they're trying to get, arrive at how to proceed, though. But the, the council could, of course, you can do whatever you want with this.
Y'all could do staggered terms right now with two years.
So, should we proceed with a voting on the amendment to, it's hidden passing the motion, it's just the amend?
According to your rules, if there is amendment, amendment proposed, then you have to vote on the amendment and then vote on the regular motion.
Everybody clear on the amendment?
Can we have discussion on the amendment at some point before we vote on the underlying motion?
We can have discussion. Yes, sir.
Okay.
You have a question?
Yeah, my question is, how, how would that impact the clerk's office and running these elections? I guess really, it's not a change, because you're doing an election every two years now anyway, and they're always done in conjunction with other entities, and that would stay the same.
Correct.
So, we're not really looking at increased expense, although if we kept it as proposed, we would be looking at a reduction in expense, because you wouldn't be running an election every two years. You'd be running them every four. But that's, that's the only difference. We used to have staggered elections, and we went to having them all at one time to save money. So.
Councilman Durio, is that a motion for an amendment? Okay.
Question, just for those of you that were on council then, and you, by doing it staggered, did you see an increase or a decrease in voter turnout? I mean, was there?
No, it was just looking at the finances, because we were having elections every year. We would have one election where the mayor and the at-large council members would run, and then the following year, we would have all of the ward council members. So, we were look, we looked at saving money by going to the two-year terms and everybody running at the same time.
Okay.
So, even if you did the two-year term, I mean, you would still be, we would still be doing the two-year elections.
You'd just be running for four.
Right.
Okay, there's an, a motion, there's an amendment to the motion. Is, if there's clarity on that about staggering the terms, all those in favor signify by saying aye to amend the motion. Any opposed?
I'm sorry, who voted nay? Who, who motioned? I know Councilmember Durio, who's second?
There wasn't a second for the amendment. All right. So, now we move back to, if there is any discussion for the amended motion for item number six, if not, we can call for the vote.
Well, not that, no, so now you're just voting on the item to approve. So, the amended, the addition to include staggered terms passed to the language. So, now it's just whether or not you want the change.
So, what we're voting on now is this proposal with the addition of staggered terms. That's all that is.
Correct.
So, it's just a question if we want four-year term or three-term limit per office.
If you want this language, yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor of approving item number six, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passes. Motion's carried. Mr. City Manager, will you please take us into the first public hearing?
Yes, Mayor. Council, to conduct a joint public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2024 budget and the proposed 2024 capital program, and at the conclusion of the hearing, take action to postpone the final vote on the proposed fiscal year 2024 budget until September 12th, 2023. Let's open and close, open the public hearing.
All right. So, the public hearing is now open?
I don't have anybody, Mayor, that wants to speak.
Okay. So, the public hearing is now closed? And could you read item number seven for us?
Yes, council has held the, the public hearing and.
I'm sorry, the CFO is saying we need to do a record vote on this one?
Yeah, state law says that after we hold the public hearing on the budget and the capital plan, that council needs to take action.
But do we need to have the agenda? And we're just doing item number seven after the public?
Todd speaks, we all listen.
Ready to get over it. Sorry.
Come on, it's Todd.
Council, council hold the joint public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2024 budget and proposed 2024 capital plan program, which you've done. And at the conclusion of the hearing, take action to postpone the final vote on the proposed fiscal year 2024 budget until September 12th, 2023. And our recommendation is to take the vote on postponing the final vote until September 12th, 2023.
Is there a motion for item number seven?
Move to approve.
Is there a second? There's, it's been moved and seconded for approval of item number seven. Any discussion? Councilman Turner?
Yes, I just want to tell staff, I thank you guys for taking the time out to do it. I asked our city manager prior to some of the decisions we made with making cuts, was it going to be beneficial to the, the city to make these cuts, when we're talking about throwing, doing things such as growth into that magnitude. So, I want, I want it to be understood for me, you know, I was in favor of supporting what you're planning, your vision, and what you want to do. With your experience, you knew what needed to be done. And with us making these cuts, I want to make it clear, I wouldn't be supportive if we're voting to make the cuts, and then we're coming back picking and choosing certain things that we want to spend the money we said we were going to cut for. So, I'm open to it. Now, we in the budget season, we talking about it. So, I just want to put it out there right now. We going to do this as a council. And you come back and say, this is what I want, but I wanted a cut. I'm not going to be in support of that.
Thank you, Councilman Turner. Any other discussion? All right. So, we need a, a roll call vote on this? Okay. All right. All in favor of approving item number seven, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, would you take us into the next public hearing?
Council conduct a public hearing and consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit a grant application and execute a contract with the Federal Transit Administration to receive funds for the ZIP. And our recommendation is to conduct the public hearing and then approve the resolution.
The public hearing is now open?
I have no one, Mayor.
The public hearing is now closed. May, may have a motion for approving Agenda Item Eight?
Move to approve. Second.
After, after Mr. City Manager reads it?
Okay. Council conduct the public hearing and consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit a grant application and execute a contract with the Federal Transit Administration to receive, receive ZIP funds. And we've held the public hearing, and now we're recommending approval of the resolution.
All right. Now, I'll accept a motion for approval for item number eight.
Move to approve again.
Been moved and seconded for item number eight. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Durio.
Didn't we already approve something like this for the ZIP?
This is, so this is, I think, a separate grant. This is emergency funds that I think were made available by the FDA, I think as a result of Emelda and Laura and Harvey funds. So, additional supplemental 5339 funds that we are requesting we apply for.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of approving item number eight, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Now is the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make public comment, you need to sign up at the kiosk. When you approach the podium, please state your city and name. You will have three minutes to speak. The green light will begin, and then the red light will come on at the end of your three minutes.
Addie Allen?
Addie Allen, 9695 Gross, good afternoon, City Manager, Mayor, Councilman, and staff. Councilman, would you welcome apartments in your neighborhood? I stay off of Major, and one of my cohorts, Mr. Matthews, he stayed in an apartment behind a neighborhood. He lost his life because, I don't know the real reason, but I was told music, and there are nuances with apartments and neighborhoods. I'm troubled, I would not want, you don't have room to put an apartment behind my house, but notifying citizens, and that's, that's something that I'm just appalled, if you would live in a neighborhood, would you want an apartment behind your house? And if you want the city of Beaumont to grow, it's putting people in homes, letting them be taxpayers, and not apartment dwellers moving from one side of town to the other, or revitalized sides of the town that are gone, going down, and let those contractors that come from other cities go to those blighted areas. Why not? You have the power, you have it in your hands, and we've empowered you to do this. So, that's off my soapbox, but emergency mode, we're in hurricane season, and I've got to hurry up, that I haven't heard the emergency plan being reviewed as it has been yearly. There was an accolade given to the emergency operator, but I haven't heard that, can we have it? The other thing is, I went to Forest Park, we've done things for other parks, if you go to Forest Park, Park, you have cemented benches that's mildewed, and the kids, if they come off the slides, they're going into muck. Come on, let's do better for our children, if you're coming to Major Drive, you need to take a look at it, my street and Todd is breaking apart where there's actually a chasm. So I was impressed last year when you showed what pipes were new and what were old, but we stay in an emergency, we stay in a state of an emergency, when are we going to get out of it? Every council agenda has emergency, you know, let's stop making excuses and let's be proactive, please. The other thing is, communication, an ordinance said you weren't going to put the, the budget in the newspaper, there are people that don't have computers, thousand dollars for a deductible, that has bothered me, because if employees have to pay the first thousand dollars of their insurance, some of them are not going to go.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
The Pharaoh Richard?
Good afternoon, my name is The Pharaoh Richard. The reason I'm here today is, last Sunday night, I was asked to leave a church after 41 years by a gentleman by the name of Wesley Coleman, he heads an organization called Night Strike, and I will not mention their alleged church other than their initials are VT, and it's on 11th Street, across the street from Jump World. The situation with that is, a new minister basically made a statement that Hitler, Hitler told the truth. Hitler told the truth about liars. Officer Boykin with the Beaumont Police Department also witnessed this through his own hearing. So I immediately got up, because myself and one other gentleman, Mrs. Segura, with only two African Americans in the church, we've been there since 19, I mean, we've been there for 41 years, since I was 10, so it was hard for me, when the minister of God, who has the doors locked, to enter the church, you have to gain access through knocking, it would be strange that I knocked 10 minutes to get in, but to say that Hitler, I'm not being judgmental, but you could have referenced anyone, Mahatma Gandhi or somebody, but Hitler told the truth in the House of God, a mass murderer? That's disturbing to me, and I was asked to leave the church by Wesley Coleman, and my issue with that is, a couple of, maybe last year, there was a baptismal service, it was very disturbing to me that young children who were put first were being baptized in the same water as registered sex offenders who dwell around some other place, as well as that makeup tent city in Old Town. That was very disturbing to me, because I don't understand the Texas laws regarding the proximity of sex offenders, but to think that young children were changing in a room closer than we are now to registered sex offenders who are also baptized in the same water, I'm not saying they don't need the Lord, I'm just saying they should have had a special service. That's it. I thank you, gentlemen, for your time, but after 41 years, hmm, well, I guess God closed that door. I will never apologize, Hitler, in my opinion, didn't tell the truth about anything but hate, and you had more than enough references, and he admitted it in front of Officer, I want to say Tamara Gassaway, because there was a discussion about my presence, because I was upset about Hitler telling the truth, oh, Jesus.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, now we will begin with council members' comments, I'll start with Councilman Taylor, kneel.
Thank you, Mayor, just want to say prayers for Florida as they prepare to get hit by a hurricane here in the next 12 hours or so, so remember them in your prayers tonight.
Councilman Samuel? Councilman Philshaw?
Thank you, Mayor. Bart, just for the sake of the citizens that are, or may be watching this later, I know that the water right now in many parts of the city has a foul odor and taste to it, but this, the water will not hurt the citizens, it's not unsafe, unhealthy, I know it's unpleasant, but it's, it's not going to, it's not a health hazard, correct?
That's correct, would you mind passing that down? I'll give you two handouts. First is, is about the free chlorine conversion, and the second is about the drought, just to reemphasize where we're at, but what I did was, I summarized some key sections out of a 26-page TCEQ document on free chlorine conversion. So disinfection is a critical piece to maintain safe drinking water in Texas, so we're required to maintain a disinfectant residual throughout the entire distribution system, so that the water is safe. And in areas with warm climates, bacteria grows more quickly, and disinfectants like chlorine can degrade more quickly, and we can get into a nitrification event. Nitrification causes loss of chlorine residuals or monochlorine residuals in the system, and if you have low or no disinfectant residual in your system, then you can get growth of bacteria that can lead to positive coliform tests, potential illness, and violations. So that's a situation we were in, we were seeing increased nitrification in the system, and we needed to address that nitrification. So there were several pros and, and cons, but the main one, the pro on the flip side of this page is, the temporary conversion to free chlorine is the only way to kill the bacteria that's causing the nitrification in the system. So to get rid of nitrification and restore our ability to maintain chlorine residuals, we had to convert to free chlorine. A major con of that are potential taste and odor complaints, so you see from the, from the little diagram there, when you have free chlorine-treated water and monochloramine-treated water blend in the system, you get those odors and tastes. So that's what we've gotten calls from citizens on, a lot of times it's described as a musty odor or taste to the water, and what we're doing is Mike's crews are going out and flushing to help accelerate that water getting out of the system. We think we're seeing that kind of pass now, we're seeing some growing number of calls today related to taste and odor that are saying they're, they're tasting and smelling higher chlorine levels. Well, that's going to be consistent with operating a free chlorine system, so once every, the free chlorine's there, you're going to experience a stronger chlorine odor and taste in the system. You shouldn't have the musty odors at that point, and we'll remain with those high chlorine levels or high chlorine smells until September 12th. So we need a few weeks of pure chlorine in the system to get rid of the bacteria that drive that nitrification, and then on September 12th, we plan to flip back to chloramines like we normally run in the system. Now, when we do flip back to chloramines, we have to flush all the free chlorine out of the system, so the, we'll, we'll start with chloramines at the two plants, and Mike's crews, once again, will have to help us flush those blend zones between the free chlorine water and the chlorine water, and get it all the way out, and then once we're done with that, we should be in better shape, not have the nitrification in the pipes, and be able to maintain our, our chlorine residuals. So we ask the public's patience, this is to keep a safe water system, it's a recommended treatment, part of the treatment process by TCEQ, so once we're through with this, we, we should be in, in better shape for, for the nitrification. The, the second document I sent is just to reemphasize that we're still in a drought, and this is extremely rare for those of us who've spent our lives in this area, but we don't often see our area in an exceptional drought, but that's where we're at right now. So we got a little bit of rain this week, but we got to get a whole lot more rain before we get out of drought conditions, we're still consuming quite a bit of water, so we, we're remaining in stage one voluntary at this time, asking people to still be moderate in their, in their water usage.
Thank you, Bart, and I haven't looked, I, I apologize, but I'm, I'm assuming we're shoving this information out through Facebook, and do you know if we are?
I believe Lauren's put out several pieces on social media, and we were going to talk this afternoon about what we might do to further get the word out.
Well, I appreciate that, because I know there are citizens that are concerned, one on being my wife, and I live with her, and she keeps asking me to fix the water problem, so thank you for your help, I'll tell her you said you're fixing it, so thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Turner?
I'm glad Randy asked that, because that was one of my questions come in, over the weekend, I got calls from several restaurant owners, and, you know, pretty vivid towards me, and of course, we signed up for position, so I took it, I contacted you, and thank you for answering over the weekend, and give me information to put out, but my question is, how do we get nitrification bacteria in our system?
It's, it's normal, these bacteria thrive off of ammonia, so a kind of a long-term consequence of running chloramines in a system is eventually, you're, you're going to run into nitrification issues, so the only way to get rid of it is just get the ammonia out for a period of time, and, and then kill it that way.
Would it be a normal, is there any preventative measures that, you know, are in place, or maybe other areas have used that are in place to avoid what we're experiencing right now?
The, you have to make sure that your treatment process forms the, the chloramines well at the plant, so you have to pay attention to how you're treating the water at the plant, you have to maintain a flushing program, there's things of that nature, but eventually, if you're running a chlorine system, which we have to do with our surface water, you're going to end up having to run free chlorine, and if you look on TCEQ's site, they mentioned that it's common in a chloraminated system to periodically run a free chlorine conversion.
Okay. And Mr. Williams, I'm asking this out of ignorance, because I don't know, who, who exactly is over our plant?
Troy Pierce, the Water Superintendent, and Daniel Becerra, the Assistant Water Superintendent, are in the audience, they report up through me.
Well, thank y'all for attending today, because it's been a hot topic.
Finished, Councilman Turner? Councilman Getz?
Bart, what would be the downside of continuing using chlorine, free chlorine as our disinfectant as opposed to chloramine? I've seen some literature that suggests that there's some potential issues with chloramine. I don't think we always, in the city, use chloramine, I think we use free chloride in the past, but what are the downsides?
Well, originally, and if we get it too far in the details, I'm going to ask Daniel up here to, to get in the weeds with you, if you want to go there, but basically, systems used to run free chlorine until the EPA came out and were focused on disinfectant byproducts, and they found that in particular with surface water systems, where you have organics in the water, you would get additional disinfectant byproducts from using free chlorine, and the way to address that was to introduce ammonia and use the chloramine process to limit those disinfectant byproducts below the regulated level. So that's why we had, when EPA changed the rules, we had to change our treatment methods to get below those regulated limits.
Are we mandated by EPA or TCEQ to use chloramine, because we have surface water as part of our water source?
We're mandated to be below certain limits, and the chloraminated process is the, the common process to, to treat the water. There are other methods out there, but they're exceedingly expensive for higher volume systems.
Do all the other local entities use chloramines, or do you know?
If they're on surface water, yes.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Durio?
Yes, first I want to thank Pastor Sharp for his comments, and I would ask, Mr. Manager, can staff look into being able to put those Crime Stopper stickers on city vehicles?
Sure, we'll look into it.
Okay. And thank the Hot Grant Review Committee, they've done a good job, and as usual, they helped us out. And also, I just want to check, Bart, you said this, but I want to be sure, because I've had a lot of folks come and say, well, whose idea was it to put chlorine or to do this, but this comes straight from TCEQ, correct?
It's, it's a treatment method recommended by TCEQ to address nitrification, it's really the only way to address nitrification once you have it in the system.
And this is part of the city's plan that was already in place in case this happens?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And Mayor, I remember, I don't know if many of y'all remember this, but years ago, we had a drought, and, I mean, don't look at me like I'm crazy, because I believe in this, but we had a citywide prayer for rain, and Mayor, that might be something that we may want to consider doing.
Absolutely.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
The city attorney?
So I just want to point out that the city's emergency plan is posted on the city's website under emergency management, and that their plan was previously reviewed with council in October of 2022, and is scheduled to be reviewed for council again in either September or October, whatever the schedule allows. Also, in May of this year, the EOC hosted the executive program summary in hurricane readiness, and so I just want to make sure the citizens are aware that we are making sure council and the public are, are abreast of the city's plans, and in our commitment to transparency that is already posted on our new and very user-friendly, beautiful city website, so you can find all that information there.
Thank you. I think I've said enough at this point, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Bean?
Quickly, just wanted to extend my appreciation to the Hotel Tax Advisory Committee and their work on that process, as well as our staff at the CBB, Christina Loki and Dean Conwell.
Thank you. Mr. Ellis? All right. Mr. City Manager?
Just a couple things, as far as the water and water, we're having a discussion after this meeting, where key city staff, of course Bart, the people there, Lauren, we're going to strategize how we're going to go forward with this event. I look at it as a, as an emergency-type event, that we need to get cartonaded and sit down and talk, and have a plan going forward on how we're going to address the, the, what's happening with the water, but also how we're going to communicate with the. have a plan going forward on how we're going to address the, the, what's happening with the water, but also how we're going to communicate with the public and, and put some plans together on that so that we're going to have that discussion this afternoon. And we got, we got a, I think our first film friendly application where they already filmed, but they submitted their application with the, the Gator Rescue Show, Gator 911, that they came in and they're going to film historic places in Beaumont, like the July Rogers, Jefferson Theater, et cetera, and put it in their television show. So they came in and fill out their application and I signed it this morning. Thank you.
Awesome. And on that, on water, I think with, my one suggestion would be that we just run the post a little bit more frequently with Facebook. Because those of us that serve on council are, we get a tremendous number of calls. And oftentimes people are only paying attention when it affects them and they're not listening with the rest of the time, which I certainly understand. So, but when we do refer people, since posts continue to go down as you put new posts down and they're older, there may be some redundancy there that gets a little bit old, but it also helps communicate during this time of the emergency. I'd also like for us to look at mid-September, if we can, for evaluation of the city council appointments that, of, of the four that are on council, I mean, that are appointed by council. Because I, so that we can get, work that into our schedule as we're able to after the budget process. And then also, I, I want to certainly thank all our committees and certainly the Hot Tax Committee for all the work they do and the amount of time that they put in, because it certainly is important. And I'm going to encourage everybody to be praying for rain and the, and certainly for Florida. But we may be looking to organize a community-wide pray for rain event in this coming week as, because we were hoping to be getting more rain this week. And at this point, we have not. And we just have to pray for how much rain we want as well.